I did.
Shall we go ahead and start the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. For which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please.
Poland. Hofstetter.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Khan.
Here.
Hafi.
Here.
Shoemaker.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to two thousand twenty-three. I believe we have a couple of gentlemen that would like to address council. If you could please step up to the mic and introduce yourselves, we'd appreciate it.
Hello, my name's Brandon Irving. I'm the director of the Veterans Service Office.
And I'm Jason Pennell. I'm currently one of Holmes County Veteran Service Commissioners.
And what we're trying to address today is, is we'd like to get a piece of land. There's a piece right between the library and the basketball court. It's like the shoot, shoot and shave the piece. What we want to do is get a memorial going for veterans. I know we have the courthouse. I know we have rails, the trails, but I feel that the veterans need something called their own, someplace where they can go mourn their lost ones. Family members can go there and mourn it. They just need a place to sit down and have their time alone. That would be a perfect spot. I feel that we should keep history right by history. So, so with it being next to the library, I mean, I mean, it will even educate children. It will educate adults. We plan on putting a retaining wall up front hopefully and bringing the ground up to level with, hopefully placing a Holmes County Veterans Memorial along that wall and then putting up a flag, putting up a couple of memorial monuments, one for POW MIA and one for, to recognize the current veterans in Holmes County. But we also want to put up like a pavilion back in the middle row in the thinner section so that we can, people can have picnics there. People can go there and just, just have a, have a day out there or afternoon with their family, with their friends, their veterans, and they can also just go there whenever they want. And that's basically how I want to bring it to you guys, that the veterans need a place to call their own. I mean, we've shared in this county, we've shared the rails, the trails, but we can't put up a monument for our veterans there because this is a shared location along with the courthouse. They already have a monument there. We can do our memorial and Veterans Day ceremonies there, but once again, it's a shared location. We have to make sure the spot's available when we get it, but if we have our own spot for these memorials and these events and stuff, we can call it our own and we can share with our veterans amongst this county. Probably we have about twelve to fifteen hundred veterans in this county. We have a lot of Vietnam veterans right now that are sick, what have you, and even the family members feel that it'd be a good, good thing to be able to go there with their veterans and just, just be alone, have them in a quiet time.
Is, is this something that you guys are going to build?
This is, this is something we're going to, if we get approval on a piece of land, we are going to start with donations. I, I have stuff in the works right now with the auditors and, and Matt Music trying to figure out the legal side of it and everything before I start taking donations. I'm not allowed to at all. They're not, they're not gonna give a route to go with that. But, but yeah, we plan on just slowly, hopefully breaking ground in spring and slowly building it up.
I think that's awesome. My husband's a veteran and I think the more we can do for our veterans, they, all the things that you guys and they have done for us, this is the least we can do for them.
And I've seen the changes. Just, I've been, I've been doing this for a year and a half in this county and I've just, the changes in the veterans since I've started coffee group and the social events and stuff we've been doing, I, I feel this would be the topping on the cake. The icing on the cake. This here would bring more veterans together. These veterans are loving that we're doing more for them now and, and this isn't about me at all. I'm, I'm Glen County. I'm doing, I want to do this for the Holmes County veterans.
Who, is currently the land Millersburg or the counties or?
This would be ours.
It's ours.
It's ours.
Okay. You have my blessing on the land.
And, and Nate, do you have any concerns?
No, I'm not with these guys Friday and a couple of other guys as well. If I, if I understood right, the memorial down in Glenmont, some of those guys that were there Friday were involved.
Kind of headed that up.
Yeah, so it'll be along those lines, not identical, but.
And we can present what we're, our plans are before we actually build, make sure that, you know, you guys okay, you know, so everything. But we would never put anything up that wouldn't be faced with them, you know, be very respectful and.
I think it's a great location. When we, we went out and looked at it, it's pretty much empty now. There's a couple of scraggly trees that'll need to come down, which is fine. And then a couple of better trees are where they want the pavilion or gazebo, so it's a nice setting for it. The other nice thing, the library story walk boards that we put in, I don't want to put, I don't want to speak for the library. I haven't talked to them yet, but I'm sure they'd be more than willing, I would hope, they'd be more than willing to participate with the veterans on, on Veterans Day or different, different events you could have there to put educational material in those storyboards, incorporate everything in one place there. Do really.
I feel that's a perfect location too, because I'm, I'm eventually going to try to integrate a Veterans Day parade there with the ceremony and stuff. If I can get that going, it'd be easier to stop traffic there than it would here on the main drag. So, so it's just the thoughts like that.
Yeah, that's great.
I think it's a great idea too, and you talked about, you know, putting some kind of a visual, you know, together to where we could look at that. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a neat, neat idea.
But one of our number one goals is, is to have the names of the killed in action and missing in action from Holmes County. You know, it's not about the veterans. It's about the ones that did it from Holmes.
Yeah, that's right.
Do you have a timeline that you would like to see this done by?
I'd just like to start in the spring sometime and just keep, I don't think it'll ever be a complete project. I would like to see, you know, every year or every five, you know, add something new, you know, to, you know, to keep it, you know.
Do you, do you have some kind of projection as far as what you're hoping you need to, to raise to, to start a project that you need to?
We're, we didn't want to get the cart before the horse. You know, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we have land and then how big of a monument or how big the, you know, extravagant we could go. Because, you know, we don't want to have something big and we didn't have land for it. So I think it's just kind of, you know, if we get the okay here, we'll, you know, kind of get things a little bit more. And we like to try to keep, like down in Glenmont, they got Briar Hill Stone. You know, we were trying to keep, you know, maybe Briar Hill Stone to have part of that as the monument, you know, since it's from the area or Holmes Limestone, or, you know, to try to have materials from the county part of the, you know, the monument. So it's, everything stays local.
And the good thing about it though is a lot of organizations, and that's where it's going to be hard to predict how much this can, the overall cost is going to be, because a lot of organizations will step in and donate a lot of things too. So, so it's just hard to predict. I, I've never put up a monument before, so I, I can't tell you what it will cost, but, but we're just, we'll make it happen if we can get a piece of land. That's all I can say.
We're talking about starting out by the road, getting that like, you know, phase one. So, you know, the stuff's started in the back and having things pour up, you know, have it along the front. Phase one, get that completed. And then like I said, as time goes on, we'll work our way back. So it's, you know, it's, it's done in sections, so.
We're, we have some things in talk, like, like for the flagpole, put a concrete base around it and all each branch stamped in the concrete of the surface and so on. So, I mean, it's not, like he said, it's there to, to recognize our POW MIA, but it's also going to recognize our, our ranches of service and our, our veterans in this county along with it.
That's awesome.
All right, so I'd like to grab your, and I believe you have the blessing of council to proceed.
All right.
Yes, you do.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The VA office has come a long way. Brandon.
Jason Pennell. Jason Peet and Brandon Irving.
Brandon, thank you for what you do up there.
You're welcome.
It's come a long way.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Maybe we have motion to spend the reading of minutes.
Shall we?
Second. Vaughn.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Any issues or corrections? You have motion to pass.
Motion. Second. Shoemaker.
Khan.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
Thank you. Well, resolution two thousand twenty-three, day zero one. Are there any questions on the bills? You have a motion to pay the bills.
I so moved.
Second.
Hafi.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Thank you. Chief.
I'd like to make a recommendation to council, the hiring full-time of Jaden Miller as a dispatcher. My intern, I think I talked to you guys before, was doing a college intern, and he's in, has one class pending, but it's a remote class, so he said he would be able to work four to ten hours force. We'll be starting this Saturday.
What, what's his name?
Jacob.
Javen.
Jacob. Javen.
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 That's great. I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second. Hofstetter.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Do you still need one more dispatcher? Is that?
Yes. If we have to hook Caleb out on the road, but this'll get Javen trained. That'll get the dispatchers, because they're on twelves already. They started twelves December thirty-first, so that'll get them back into working, eight-hour shifts. And hopefully I can find another dispatcher and get Caleb off the road.
Okay.
Thank you. Nate?
I don't have a whole lot for you, but we did, we have been meeting the design review little committee. We've been meeting pretty regularly the last few weeks, working through the guidelines and ordinances that Reeve Baldwin had come and talked to us about a while back. Hoping to have something to you guys February, March, early March for your consideration. The TAP project, we're waiting on bid opening. That'll be March, or, yeah, March ninth. Nothing on the stimulus money demolition project or the Appalachian community grant projects. Did get an update from our dealer that the dump truck we ordered last year was, was received by them on January third, which was only a month later than they anticipated. So I, I'm happy about that. That's pretty good. I did have a small, they found a leak in the back window while they were looking at it, so they're going to fix that. And then I assume that's done and then it gets shipped out to the outfitters for everything else. So who knows when we'll get it for sure, but at least it's gotten that far. So I'm optimistic.
That's good.
That's really all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
We should have all received the December financial statement. There's the acknowledgement sheet. I am working, currently working on the year-end financial statement. There's a lot of different notes that have to be added to it this year for state auditor. So hopefully by next, first part of next week, I'll have that done and I'll email it out to you. Liquor license, the Daymax, which is the bullying alley. We got the official license request in the mail. So you can request a hearing objecting to it if you choose. You just need to motion one way or another because I need to send this back in, so.
I make a motion to not have a hearing.
I'll second.
Hafi.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Did you say aye? Hofstetter.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
We all know it does no good to have a hearing. Yep, for sure.
I only have one other item. I just wanted to let you all know that a lot of residents are very appreciative on the reduction in the water and sewer bills. Mary's getting a lot of payments in right now and she's had numerous comments. I even talked to a couple of people today when she was at lunch, wondering why their bill was lower. And we're very pleased that you guys gave them that little bit of deduction in their, reduction in their bills. I just wanted to pass that along.
Good. Good. That's good.
And I'm still having issues with people receiving these bills at this time.
Some of them were tore apart. I can't control that.
Thank you, Karen. Bob?
I don't have anything that can, lots of comments about the.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that under full business. All right, two thousand twenty-three committee appointments. As you see, I left everybody the same as previous years. I, I think it works well that if there's major issues, we just come together, councils, the committees and meeting. We need to establish two thousand twenty-three meeting dates and times.
Make a motion for the same times and dates.
Second and fourth Mondays, seven o'clock.
I make a motion, change it to six.
Well, I was just.
You can't have two motions on the floor at the same time.
I was just wondering during the summer months if we were going to go back to the one, one day a month to.
We could, if you want. I mean, you can revisit that when we get to that point.
I thought that that worked really well.
I would suggest.
I mean, we really didn't have a lot going on and we dealt with it all in one meeting and.
I would suggest though, if we're going to do it, I think we did it July, August and September. Maybe do it June, July and August.
Yeah, that would make more sense.
Kind of see how things go, but that would be my suggestion.
That would make more sense. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to keep the dates the same, date and time. On.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Thank you, Charlie Bob.
I was persistent.
Now, now we, now we need to elect new council president for two thousand twenty-three.
I move to have Tom Mayor, Tom Vaughn, be the president.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Vaughn.
I think I should've changed.
Khan.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations. Now, well, second reading of resolution two thousand twenty-two, day thirty-four by title only. A resolution adds section seven point six to the Mellesburg personnel policy. Are there any questions? Committee reports. Under our business.
Under our business, Mr. Starner that addressed our meeting, well, two weeks ago, in regards to a warming station. And I did some research, even though I was aware that Glenmont had a warming station through Bob Turner, who was the mayor, and he asked where ours were. I said, I don't know. So, started digging into it and found out that Jason Troyer is the emergency management go-ahead guy here in Holmes County. So Nate and I met with him Wednesday, which was third, fourth, whatever.
Fourth, fifth, sixth.
And hashed some things out. Mellesburg does have a warming station. It's the commissioner's office.
Their reading office?
Yeah.
Oh.
But it'd be up to them to initiate that and open that office up, correct?
Correct. Well, he's forming a committee, which Nate doesn't have time for, so I more or less said, okay, I will do it at that meeting we had. And he was getting a hold of Holmes Job and Family Services, churches, other things. But there are stations throughout Holmes County, but really the only time these stations would be open if there was a power outage. Well, we need them just when it's sub-zero like it was right before Christmas. So there was supposed to be a meeting. What day was it? I showed up. I didn't know it was canceled.
No.
Oh, you didn't get a copy?
No.
Well, anyways, I, over there. Anyways, one day last week. That's all I can say. And found out that Mr. Troyer had COVID, so the meeting was canceled. I missed that part. And he's going to reschedule a meeting to see where we go, that, that we have warming stations, what it's going to take to man them, or, you know, if it's volunteers or whatever, and what is required. So they would be available.
Well, thank you for following up on that and volunteering to you.
Yeah.
Putting that up.
I mean, after the guy stood there and told, see, a mother with two kids out in the weather in their bare feet, good. I mean, whether it really happened or not, I don't know, but.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else under our business? With that being said, let's, the UTV issue. Mr. Mallett's here again. Mr. Mallett, I only ask if you have something new to add?
Well, I have a lot of stuff to add.
Well, I mean, you, you've been in a lot of comments, a lot of presentations over the last couple of meetings. Unless you've got something major relevant, change from what you presented, then, then, then please present so we can make a decision here.
I want to throw in one more thing before we get, excuse me. I had two calls on Kimball that their garbage wasn't picked up, you know, the first of the month before. They have the extra. And they called Kimball and Kimball said, you need a yellow ticket, which I've never heard of. And I got it from, one person didn't say about the yellow ticket, but the other one did.
Not underneath our, not under our contract.
Yeah.
Our contract states that bulk I was the one who picked up the first pickup.
Right.
Before Mr. Mallett starts, you made a comment, I think you alluded to a vote possibly.
We need to make a decision.
But let me, let me back up here a little.
Not so much a vote, but a decision needs to be made tonight whether you're going to ask our solicitor to draft legislation, to move forward with this or not.
Well, the reason I bring it up is I believe in the minutes, it was suggested that comments by the village, anybody in the village are supposed to be submitted by the fourteenth. So that's coming up. So I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but we still need to allow.
I thought it was by the first meeting.
Yeah.
Well, but I, I believe the minutes. I believe the minutes indicate the fourteenth.
Well, I, I.
So I think we need to.
Well, either way, we've had a lot of comments submitted, a lot of questions asked, and I can tell you from what I've, the responses I've heard, ninety-plus percent do not want this. I don't know what you guys have heard, but from, from the people that I've spoken with personally and the, and the, what we receive here at the village, that's kind of consensus I see. So, but you six have to make a decision.
It's been fourteen.
Does it say the fourteen?
Yeah.
But I think the discussion was at the meeting, to this, discuss it tonight, not fourteen.
Why?
I'm not sure what the fourteenth would be.
Yeah, the fourteenth is this weekend. So which, you know. Exactly.
That's where Judy got that number.
And I agree with you. If, if it's, if it's the fourteenth, then I really think that we need to get people till the fourteenth to get this.
Does that show any place other than the minutes?
Probably not.
Because the discussion, the meeting was this meeting.
I know that. I know that.
Yeah.
Well, that's my fault if I put the fourteenth because I swore I said the ninth. It wasn't corrected either.
The minutes that were approved dictate when the vote should actually take place, which should be any time after that, at the next meeting is the way I viewed that.
All right. Well, thank you for clarifying that. That was, we just missed that, so. Mr. Mallett?
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I brought some handouts. This is not my opinion. This is all a hybrid revised code. That's highlighted. Pass them around, please. We have three handouts. Everyone gets their hands and I'll explain what we're looking at. This is on the section forty-five oh one point oh one motor vehicle laws, which the state of Ohio did train me in many years ago, working as a peace officer. All right, paragraph C, definition of an agricultural tractor and tractor engine means any self-propelling vehicle that is designed or used for drawing other vehicles or wheel machinery that has no provisions for carrying loads independently of such other vehicles that is used principally for agricultural purposes. I believe if you have an ATV with a ditch and shoes to take care and maintain properties, the actual legal description would fit and apply to this. Next page back, section BV, it's a description of a utility vehicle. Means a self-propelled vehicle designed for bed principally for the purpose of transporting materials or cargo in connection with construction, agricultural, forestry, ground maintenance, lawn and garden, material handling or similar activities. We did get the manufacturer's certificate of origin from my unit and it has been titled as a utility vehicle. Next page, you'll find mini truck. And these are things that if you folks move forward on any type ordinance to allow, that you need to take a look at these and have the exact descriptions of what your requirements are. I have these up. This is the next section. Section forty-five eleven dot two one six, traveling from one farm field to another for agricultural purposes. Notwithstanding, by the way, these are effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, House Bill thirty of one hundred and thirty-fourth General Assembly. Notwithstanding sections forty-five eleven dot two one four, forty-five eleven dot two one five, under revised code, a person may operate a utility vehicle on any public roads or right-of-ways other than a freeway when traveling from one farm field to another for agricultural purposes if the vehicle is displaying a tray in order, slow-moving vehicle emblem, as described in section forty-five thirteen point one one two. This is the last one. Okay, section forty-five thirteen dot one one three, emblem and several requirements for farm machinery and agricultural tractors. The highlighted sections are for farm machinery. My utility vehicle is not a tractor by the very nature of its description, but it is farm equipment. No person shall lease, rent or operate on a street or highway any unit of farm machinery that is designed by its manufacturer to operate at a speed greater than twenty-five miles per hour unless the unit displays both of the following. I take it everybody in here knows what an SMB sign is. Okay, if I have one here, if there are any questions. Okay? A speed identification symbol that does both of the following meets the specifications contained in the American Society of Agricultural Engineers standards, agricultural equipment, speed identification symbol indicates the maximum speed in miles per hour at which the unit of farm machinery is designated by its manufacturer to operate. I would imagine most of you do not know what that is, so I brought mine in. This is what's online. It's rated for forty mile an hour. And this is on the back of it, right across from the SMB sign. So that is what mine is rated at. So these sections, these are not Nick's wishes, Nick's wants, Nick's demands. This is the higher revised code that we all have to abide by. I don't plan on running around in Millersburg going to buy donuts or a frosted or anything else. I'm planning on bringing my vehicle in to. I'm planning on bringing my vehicle in to work on the property as maintenance, whether it's snowplowing, cut the brush, getting some logs out from trees that have been down, whatever it takes to maintain the property. We're not looking to, uh, go zip it around the alleys, but we are planning on following the Ohio revised code on servicing property. And what I would suggest that you folks do this evening armed with this information, please consider enacting an ordinance exempting utility vehicles from servicing property in Millersburg from any of the ordinances that you currently have. That's what I would suggest that you do, talk that over in executive session. This is not going to harm the village at all. It's strictly taking care of the properties. On a slide up just for a lap, Thursday, when I came into town, had some errands to run around, and I came by the facility here, about two-hour interval between the two passes. You know that's going to help you.
I saw it.
Okay? To get back to that first handout, what it describes, it describes literally the definition of a tractor. And it states, which is used principally for agricultural purposes. There was one sitting out here for at least two hours on Thursday, it might have been longer, but I know it was at least two hours.
Right here in their parking lot.
Yeah, in your guys' parking lot. So that kind of is not being used for agricultural purposes and you can't get it any more blatant than right in front of your buildings in your own parking lot. So folks, I'm asking you to use a little common sense here with this. Draft the ordinance so that eliminates it, makes this all go away. And one other last parting shot I needed to pass on to you, just to chuckle, chuckles. God, I love this one. I got the, I'm random, or excuse me, the manufacturer's certificate of origin for the utility vehicle. Took them thirty-nine days to get it to me, I thought it was like forever. So I went up to BMV to get a title for it. They refused to give me a title. I said, excuse me? Refused, so I called the head clerk, and we all know who that is, I went to the courthouse, and I put it to her. What's going on here? She said, well, I'm supporting my workers. So I went to Kershok and, and they issued a title there, and I also had a printout of, uh, section twenty-four point one-one, point one, the policy and procedure manual for titling standards for the state of Ohio, which is all eighty-eight counties. And let's just put it to you this way. You want to see violations? I have the violation in my hand if they per, when they refused to title, all the provisions that were required of it. Bring in certificate of origin, bill of sale, the actual tax register receipt, and approves who it belonged to. But that's some of the questions that I asked, why would they actually refuse to do their job that's in the procedure manual? I don't know, only they can answer that. Just to share that little chuckle, some of the hurdles I've had to jump through to follow, follow the laws and try to make everything proper. So ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your time, and as I said, I have additional information that needs to be passed out tonight.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Mullet, I'm going to ask this of you. We will, by our, by the statement made in the minutes, we will take comments through Saturday. Next council meeting, this body will make a decision. I'm not going to let anyone else speak on the matter at that point. We're just, I think we've all been had enough discussion on this, enough information presented. This body will make a decision at next meeting.
I'm hoping you never see me again on this topic.
Well, I'm just letting you know. You're more welcome to come, of course, but.
No need, sir.
But I, I'm not going to, I, I'm not going to allow any more comments on this, on this issue.
Oh, I understand, but the brochure you have handed out now.
You're going to let me comment?
Yes.
The brochure that I handed out, not brochure, the actual printout, the Ohio revised code supports my position on this a hundred percent. And it's not open for, if you read black and white, it's pretty funny.
It's also pretty black and white, it's up to this body whether to allow it or not. I mean, that, that's also the state law, it's our decision whether to allow it. Right, what anything else in the code says, correct, Mr. Hines?
You can't, you cannot go against Ohio revised fit of it either.
I believe the Ohio revised code states we can or cannot allow these vehicles on our streets.
You're talking on a legal aspect, I'm talking in an agricultural, two separate areas, and we have the, the president. But again.
That's fine, I, I'm a lawyer, I'm not going to argue with you, I'm just letting you know that next meeting, this decision will be made. With that being said, does anyone have any more comments in regards to this?
I, I have a couple. Jeff, you made a comment earlier that, um, the, the feedback that, that we've received from the village is ninety percent against it.
Yeah, I, I've talked to several pretty personally, we received three or four emails. And I believe they've been forwarded to everyone, am I correct?
Um, they, the emails don't show a ninety percent.
No, they do not. No, no, I'm saying the people I've also spoken to personally, not just, not just what we receive.
Okay.
I'm just saying, cause I've talked to several individuals one-on-one also. So I'm just letting you know what, what my perception is.
Okay, and I've spoken to several individuals and it's split-flopped.
It is, me too.
So, but I, here, here's my, here's my question. So at the next meeting, in my head, I'd like to be clear on what the motion is supposed to state.
There, there won't be a motion, all you guys have to stop, correct me if I'm wrong. All you guys do is let it tell Bob to draft this legislation. Which at that point, once it is drafted, it will come back to you guys for a vote.
Wait a minute.
Is that correct?
The, the question, I mean, there could be a more expanded process, but.
The real specific question I have is, because if you look at the emails and in conversations with people, you're talking about UTVs, ATVs, and golf carts are in the, that's what's been conveyed to me. So my question is real simple. Is, is this going to be a specific vote on UTVs only? Because that's what Mr. Mullet is here for. He's here on a UTV issue, he's not here on an ATV issue.
Or a golf cart issue.
So, we are specifically voting on the UTV, correct? We're not here to make or pass an ordinance one way or another on ATVs. Because I'm going based on his submission to the body here, the village council. He's the only one that's came to village council and addressed to us that this is a UTV issue. ATVs, golf carts, that's a whole different issue. I want to be clear in my head when we come back that in my conversations with people over the next couple of weeks and reading all this and everything that, that, you know, our village solicitor has, has conveyed to us, that I vote the way I feel I need to vote. Because it's really complicated.
I can tell you what my understanding was, Brad. My understanding was that it was the UTVs that was the issue, not, not golf carts, not.
Not ATVs.
There's another, not ATVs.
That's my understanding too.
Not the, the lower, there's also another designation of low speed.
Low speed and upper speed.
And four-wheelers and all the other things that go in with all of that.
Right.
Yeah.
Which I, I think would be lumped in with ATVs, but yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And do you think that if you were to allow UTVs, that you're not going to want people coming here asking for everything else?
That's very possible and maybe not. I mean, right now, we have one person.
I think I can clear it up a lot of this.
Okay, go ahead and talk.
I, I know, I don't want to interrupt you, Brad, but, um, I've learned a lot about this over, you know, the last week or two weeks. And I may be the only person in the state of Ohio that understands the law, I'm ser, I'm not trying to brag, uh, but it is, there is so much misunderstanding about this. Nobody seems to know the law. Uh, and it took me a long time to wade through all this, to, to figure it out. Part of the reason is that the laws are very confusing. They were written in different times, they conflict with each other. Just to illustrate, three years ago, when we were going through a similar thing with Harold Mullet, we had Matt Music, who was the assistant prosecutor at the time, write a memo about one issue that had to do with this forty-five eleven, forty-two one-four and two-one-five, about what it meant by local authority. So he did a lot of research, did a really nice job, I've got the memo here. But the part that, that was interesting was, he actually called the guy who drafted the U, this, the ordinance that would be, the statute we're talking about, forty-five eleven point two-one-four and two-one-five. And he said to the guy, Bill Sykes was his name, he's no longer a senator, but he said, can you give me some insight on what this means? He says, well, to tell you the truth, I had a constituent in my jurisdiction that wanted to drive his golf cart. So I had an aide draw it up, I didn't, you know, pay much attention to it. And I've read it over, I agree that it's very confusing, and I don't know what means. I, and I'm serious about that, I can quote you what Matt, Matt said. The point is, you know, they always said, there's two things you never want to see made. One is sausage and the second is legislation. And this, this is an example of that. That's why it is so confusing, that's why people don't really know what the law is. I really think I do, I'm not the smartest guy in the world, I didn't go to the best law school, but I was a college professor for three, uh, law school professor for three years, prosecuting the attorney of this county for six years, I was judge for eleven years, magistrate in Wayne County for eighteen years, magistrate back down here for four years. I've been doing this job for twenty-seven years. I don't, I'm not the smartest guy, but I have a lot of, of knowledge. And I've had to put it all together to try to figure this out, okay? What we're talking about here, if we're, and again, if we're just talking about utility vehicles, that's great. You know, I didn't hear any, any, the same statute talks about, you know, the low-speed vehicles, under-speed vehicles, which is, which is golf carts, mini trucks. I haven't heard any discussion about that, I, I didn't think that that was on the table. So if it is, you know, that's fine, because it's all covered under the same statute. But let me clarify something right off the bat. A utility vehicle is different than an all-purpose vehicle. All-purpose vehicle is also called an all-terrain vehicle, razor, four-wheeler. You know, the umbrella definition is all-purpose vehicle. It's totally different. The village does not have the statutory authority to allow all-purpose vehicles to ride on the streets of Millersburg. Don't have the power to do it, so that is completely off the table. Okay, I can show you the, the part of the statute that says that you can't do it. Now, county and townships can allow it if county commissioners pass the legislation or the township trustees pass legislation that allows all-purpose vehicles on the, their, their roads. They have not done that. Now, I can't speak to all, all the townships, I don't know that. But I do know that county commissioners have not allowed it. So, but everybody and his brother, including the lieutenant from the Highway Patrol that I talked to today, thought that it was legal for all-train vehicles to be on the roads of Holmes County. It is not. Now that, because nobody cited for it, doesn't mean that it's legal. It's like, let's say I drive up seventy-one over ten miles an hour beyond the speed limit. Uh, of course, I would never do such a thing. Let's just say that I did and I pass highway patrolmen after highway patrolmen after highway patrolmen, consistently going ten miles an hour of the speed limit. I might think that the speed limits change. It's, well, it's not seventy and then sixty-five and then sixty on the way up to Cleveland. It's actually eighty, seventy-five, and seventy. And I might tell my friends, you know, I, I pass all these highway patrolmen every time I go up there two or three times a, a, a week. Not, this is a hypothetical person that I've read about. And I never get stopped. And then the people I say that to might say, boy, jeez, I didn't know they changed the law, I didn't know that was legal to do that. It's not legal. Whoever's doing that, that's going by, is violating the law. But they aren't enforcing the law. And that's the same, you know, that's what's happening here. That's why everybody thinks it's legal to drive an all-purpose vehicle on the streets, on the roads of Holmes County. Okay, so let's, let's put that to rest. No ATVs are allowed in Millersburg, you keep, don't even have the authority to allow ATVs in Millersburg, okay? Now let's, you know, talk about, you know, what we're here to talk about, the mini truck, the utility vehicles. There's a specific definition of a utility vehicle. I have not seen Mr. Mullet's vehicle, I don't know if it fits the definition of a utility vehicle. He says, it says it on the title, that meets squat really. Because those certificates of origin are made by the manufacturer. They can put anything they want to. Most of them say all-train, AT, all-train vehicle. They could be utility vehicles, but they just put them down, those are national, you know, they're made by a national company. They don't know what the Ohio law is, and they don't know what the Ohio definition of a utility vehicle is. So they might think it's a uti, utility vehicle, but it doesn't meet the Ohio definition of utility vehicle. So I'm suggesting to you that that means nothing, okay? What mean, what does mean something if we would inspect the vehicle and it meets the definition of what the Ohio revised code says is a utility vehicle.
This is an affidavit, we're making it from a off-highway vehicle to a utility vehicle, and that's what's required when it's typed. So that is how it's done.
What, I, I'm not, I'm not following what you're saying.
That's the affidavit that's filed for the title office. When you show up with a utility veh, it's not a utility vehicle, when you show up, it's a manufacturer's certificate of origin. It comes in as a OHV, off-highway vehicle.
Right.
That is the affidavit to get it made into body style change to a utility vehicle. That's the exact form that's used at the title office. So.
Okay.
That is a utility vehicle, and that's how it becomes one.
Mr. Mullet, I'm curious, did, at the, at the BMV over here, would they have let you title that as an all-purpose vehicle?
No, they wouldn't have issued a title at all in any manner.
So regardless of the type of vehicle, they were not?
I can read the section what it's supposed to be. This is what my requirements are, and there's their requirements.
Okay, I, I'm, I hate to interrupt, but I think this is my time to talk, you had your time. Okay, so, let's assume for the sake of argument that it is a utility vehicle, okay? You do have the authority to allow a utility vehicle on the streets of Millersburg. You do have that authority, and it's under forty-five eleven point two-one-four and forty-five eleven point two-one-five, okay? Now, there are certain requirements of that, and that is, and I think, uh, this is an. Let me see here, I marked it right here, yes, okay. So, um, no per, it's two-one-four says, no person shall operate a utility vehicle. I'm only going to read the parts of this that are pertinent to our discussion about utility vehicles. No person shall operate a utility vehicle upon any public highway or street except as follows, okay? Upon a street or highway having an established speed limit not greater than thirty-five miles per hour, okay? So any street in, in Millersburg that has a speed limit of greater than, than thirty-five miles an hour, you do not have the authority to allow a utility vehicle on that street. Likewise, the, the county wouldn't have that authority either. Likewise, the state would not have that authority, okay? Nobody can allow his vehicle to ride on a ride, on a road with a speed limit of greater than thirty-five miles an hour. It's not possible, it's not legally possible to do that, okay? So, um, okay, uh, that is two-one-four. Two-one-five is the next section. A local authority may authorize the operation of a util, utility vehicle. If they, and they do, they shall do, not may, but shall do all of the following. Limit it to streets where it's, it's un. Limit it to streets where it's, it's under thirty-five miles an hour. Okay? Uh, require the owner uh, to go through an inspection by a local law enforcement officer. Obviously, we'd have to be in the business, the police department would have to be in the business of inspecting these. Okay? And I can tell you, inspection requirements are very onerous. We, Matt, I've talked to Matt, he, he would have to probably go to school to learn how to do it. The highway patrol is the only jurisdiction that does those kinds of inspections. And I'm sure that they go through all kinds of training so that they can learn how to inspect these vehicles. These, and these vehicle inspections, I, and I'll go through this if you want me to, are very, very exacting. And it says that, that political subdivision, police department has to have the equipment in order to, to do this. So that, I, to me, that is a consideration of the village. Are you going to train an officer to learn how to do these inspections? Are you going to tie up an officer for maybe a day to inspect these vehicles? That, it, to me, is a burden to the police department. Is that the way we want our police department to spend their money, to spend their time? So I'm just saying.
So it's not just to kick a tire, you get turn signals and headlights?
It isn't, and, and, and I'm sure you will find that other jurisdictions that allow this, that's all they do. They kick a tire. They say, oh, I bet it has brakes. Oh, I bet the steering is good. It's a brand-new vehicle, must be good. You know? That is not what the requirements are. If, if this body wants to follow the law, and I hope you do.
And I assume that liability of our inspection is incorrect and there's an accident falls back on us?
The, not, not only would, could there be legal liability, but there's also a moral obligation. That you're allowing an unsafe vehicle on the road. And because of your incomplete inspection, something has happened to somebody. That, that to me is, is a big burden.
See, Bob, when, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
So when I read that information, it seemed to me pretty basic. It seemed pretty basic. You know, you've got, you know, turn signals, you've got a horn. I mean, the, the brake issue, you would, in my mind, as I'm reading that, I'm thinking that's pretty simple stuff to, to be able to determine whether they meet .
What were you, what were you reading? Do you know what you were reading?
I was reading, uh, I believe, uh, forty-five eleven two fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
The, the requirements that it, it, to allow the, the vehicle to be registered in the village.
If you're, if you're interested , I can go into a lot more detail about what, what is actually required in the inspection .
So, Bob, I'm curious, if somebody buys a side-by-side and shows up at the BMV looking to get it titled.
Mm-hmm.
Is the default titling of it going to be as an all-purpose vehicle?
Most of them are. I, I took a trip down to Valley ATV, which is a, a big dealership in Loudonville. Second largest in the whole state of Ohio. They say almost all of them are titled as ATVs and all-terrain vehicles.
Okay.
Only some of them are titled as utility vehicles.
Which, which then becomes an issue of enforcement for the village. If, if we were to pass this and we see a vehicle driving, is it probable cause to stop them to check the registration to see how it is titled?
Is it a utility vehicle or is it, you know, an ATV?
Right.
It's a question because I can tell you that having been down at Valley ATV, a lot of these razors, okay, or side-by-sides. I think is the more common name for them. They have a little bed in the back of them. Okay? Now, is that a bed for purposes of utility? Does that make it a utility vehicle? I submit that it is not because there is a specific, uh, and I'll read the definition of, uh.
Back to your question, Brad.
Okay.
Uh, just, I mean, we will issue, if this proceeds, we will issue a sticker from the village. So if someone is driving through town, if it, if it is out of registration from the village, they'd be cited right there. Correct?
Yes, some of the, some of the municipalities, I don't agree with this, but some of the municipalities say, well, if they have a sticker from someplace else, then we'll just accept it.
I wouldn't do that.
I would either because I'm sure that these other jurisdictions that allow this are, it's very blasé. I, I would not be in favor of that.
We could, we could put a, a price on that sticker too, for our time.
Yep.
Whether that be a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, whatever, I mean, that would be part of the.
And you would want it to be renewed also because you would want to make sure that the vehicle is in the same condition it was when it got inspected initially and passed inspection. It, you know, maybe yearly. And that's what I'm saying, if Matt has to, you know, look at these uh, utility vehicles on a yearly basis and spend half a day or a day inspecting them. Well, that's what, that's your decision. So here's the definition of a utility vehicle. Okay? It's self-propelled, a self-propelled vehicle designed with a bed principally for the purpose of transporting material or cargo in connection with construction, agriculture, forestry, grounds maintenance, lawn and garden, materials handling, or similar activities. The razors I saw, the side-by-sides I saw, that's not the purpose of that bed.
Well, I, I believe a UTV would have a mechanical dump bed.
Not necessarily.
Well, a larger bed.
Right.
You know, something you could fit those, that kind of thing in, right?
Yeah, they could.
Yeah.
They could.
But those smaller ones wouldn't, you wouldn't fit anything in there.
Now, what they're running into in Loudonville is that the farmers were saying, well, geez, why, you know, why can't I run my ATV into Loudonville? And well, because your ATV is not, not a utility vehicle. So they, they're putting these makeshift beds on the back of their ATVs so that it fits the definition of a utility vehicle. And then they're running them into Loudonville. You know, it's a little floodgate, floodgates thing.
Now, now in a scenario like that, would they, would the Loudonville police be within their rights to stop them to check registration? To, to verify that it is titled as a utility vehicle?
I, I would think so. You know, I would think so. If, if, you probably can tell a, a manufacturer-made bed versus, you know, some aftermarket thing. I, I don't know, but I would think so. Yeah. So, so that's the, the definition of a utility vehicle, it has to have a bed. And, and that bed can't be just any old bed. It has to be a bed that was designed for these uses.
It was made by the manufacturer.
Yeah. And that's why I'm saying, that is the definition in the revised code. But because Kubota or, I don't even know who the other manufacturers are, say it's a util-, utility vehicle. To me, that doesn't mean anything because it has to meet the definition that's in the revised code in order for it to be a utility vehicle. Okay? And I'm also hearing that the clerk's office will change what it is. They'll change, those, somebody will come in, I want this to be a utility vehicle. I talked to the clerk in Holmes County, they just had somebody from Tuscaloosa County came in. He said, it's an ATV, but I want you to put that it's a utility vehicle. I'm not sure why he wanted that. And they refused to do it. But other counties are doing it. They're changing what kind of vehicle it's registered as. That's why I'm saying, I don't think that means anything. I don't think it means anything what the certificate of origin says. Or what the title says it is. The real test is you inspect it and you see if it meets the definition that's in the revised code.
It just sounds like the, the, the regulations and enforcement of it is just very onerous. I mean, it's just, it's got to be very involved in doing anything with them.
If you're doing it right, Brad.
Yeah.
Doing it right. Yeah. But I, the problem is jurisdictions are not doing it right. They just aren't.
All right, does Brad, or have your questions been answered that, that you had?
Thank you, Bob.
Any others have any other questions that?
I think you should, I'd file a motion to, for you to clarify the statutes on this because they are very confusing.
Here, here, here's the bottom line answer to this whole thing. Is that the Ohio legislature needs to get their act together. Put all of these conflicting laws together and reconcile them into one statute that makes sense. That is the real answer here. Because it does not make sense. It's just like Bill Seitz, well, I have a constituent that wanted to ride his golf cart, so I, I threw together an ordinance and, or a statute, and there it is. And that's what we're dealing with here. This, this kind of stuff. There, there's actually a law that says a utility vehicle is not a motor vehicle. I, it's like, what? How can you say that? And then it says, you have to register and, and, and get license plates for a motor vehicle. And it says that you have to do that for a utility vehicle. Be, in the very other section, it says utility vehicle isn't even a motor vehicle. I mean, it's just crazy stuff. And when people say they understand the, the law, they don't understand the law. I do, I actually do understand the law. I think I could set myself out as the expert on this issue in the state of Ohio. I'm kidding, but.
All right. So everyone has any question you want answered to answer?
And let, let me address another thing that Mr. Mullet started out with. Okay? If he wants to run his vehicle from Buckhorn into Millersburg with, you know, the SMB sign and all that sort of thing. Okay? If he meets the requirements of the Ohio law, he can do that. I don't think he does, by the way. But if he thinks that he does, then, you know, we'll check into it, the Millersburg police and maybe sheriff's department, and I'm sure the highway patrol. Will test him to see if he meets all the requirements. And the reason I don't think he, that he meets the requirements is because it has to be farm machinery. And I don't think he has a farm. And I don't think he raises crops. And I don't think that, I don't care what he does with it. I don't think it's, meets the definition of farm machinery. And, and if you, if, if it isn't farm machinery, Nick, it's not legal for you to have that, that sign on the back. And it's not legal for you to drive twenty-five miles an hour on eighty-three. Because you are, driving twenty-five miles an hour on eighty-three is a hazard.
It doesn't say for one moment that I have to own the property, but it's being used on the pole of about six hundred fifty acres, three different farms.
Okay.
So you have no clue what you're saying there, sir.
Okay.
And what is the date on your information?
Like I.
It was August of twenty, twenty-two. And I noticed you, you did not address or speak one word about forty-five eleven two-one-six. This, that's the agricultural aspect and you ignored that. And since we're on the top, the topic.
Hey, let me, let me clarify something .
Please don't interrupt me, I gave you that courtesy, sir. The last meeting, you said you had talked to Lieutenant Stryker. That sheriff's office said was illegal to run on any roads in Holmes County, state, county, or township. When I walked out the door last meeting, I called dispatch and asked them. They just called me quite the opposite. So the next morning, I called the sheriff's department and asked to speak to Lieutenant Stryker. He was in the meeting, so they put me through to his voicemail. Told him what I needed to talk to him about, the topic and content. He didn't call me back, but later afternoon, the sheriff did. And the sheriff spent about thirty-one minutes talking to me about this, said we don't have a problem with it. And they told me about a meeting. I'm going to tell you what the sheriff said. The sheriff said, if any of you folks have a question on this, to please contact him and he will clarify it. Okay? That meeting was in place with Mr. Heinz, Mr. Vaughn, state trooper, and prosecutor at the time was, now, he's now a judge. And the content of that meeting, according to the sheriff, was to pressure him to enforce no ATVs, UTVs in the county, and they refused. This is what he told me on the phone. Okay? But I would, don't take my word for it. Contact the sheriff and ask him. Because that was the invitation that he told me to bring to this meeting and use the words that he had spoke. So.
So you're, you're saying that it's wrong for us to encourage the sheriff to enforce the law?
I didn't say it wrong, did I? I told you what you did. And while you're talking about the inspections, I have the paperwork for inspection to get a plate. And it's not as detailed as what you're trying to make out. It's basically muffler, turn signals, headlights, brake lights, windscreen. Uh, and I can bring it in.
I don't want to get into an argument with you about this, but I've got all of the regulations right here. And if they want me to show them all the regulations, I'll be happy to do that.
What's the date on yours that you used?
I just printed it off today from the Ohio revised code.
You didn't address or talk about two-one-six. What about two-one-six?
I, what about two-one-six? You still, in order to have a slow-moving vehicle sign, you have, it has to be farm machinery.
Uh, read what it says on two-one-six.
Okay, Nick, like I said, Nick, Nick, listen, Nick. Listen, Nick, 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 listen.
I don't like.
If you want, if you want to .
It's not what it says.
If you want to try to qualify to have a slow-moving vehicle sign, and that's how you're going to bring your utility vehicle into Millersburg? And you fit all the requirements, then more power to you.
We will.
But the issue is whether or not they're going to allow, they're going to pass an ordinance that allows you to do so. That's the, that's the.
I was trying to make it easier if they do, so we don't have to deal with that, but then push comes to shove. But push comes to shove, it's forty-five eleven dot two-one-six, right there in my handout. That was printed out as of today. And it was dated August of twenty-twenty-two, so it's very current.
Okay, you know, if you fall within that, then more power to you.
And we use it on different farms, quite a few different ones. It's never had any real time yet that it wasn't going to or from a farm. So when you say I don't have it and try to twist this around, I'm very disappointed that you could do that. Very disappointed.
I am telling you what the law is, that, that's all I'm.
All right. Gentlemen, can we just, just please stop? Counsel, do you have the answers you want answered? And we're making a formal decision?
Yes, sir.
In two weeks?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you, gentlemen, and all have a good evening.
Thank you.
For your comments. Do you have anything else coming for counsel? We have a motion for adjournments.
Second.
Hold on.
Hi.
Popstetter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Poppy?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone have a wonderful day.